Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of April 22nd, 2020. As we start all meetings, I'd like to remind everyone that we are broadcasting this live. We are also recording this for you set a later date if need be. So please keep that in mind. If at any time during this meeting, because we are on Zoom, that you're having any problems, raise your hand so I can kind of see you and we'll try to work our way through it. But we are getting better at it. I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Thanks, Michelle. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, again, we're going to have to do a roll call attendance and everybody would be as patient as we can be. We have a little bit of ground to go over. We had a meeting this afternoon and we'll get into all of that as we're moving forward. I'm going to take attendance, Mr. Boyce.
Yeah.
Ms. Fires. You're muted, Dawn.
Here.
Mr. Colley.
Here.
Mr. Howard. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Scriven.
Here.
Mr. Small.
Here.
Ally Taylor.
Yeah.
And Bob Hayes, here. We're missing Mr. O'Brien. If Mr. O'Brien checks in, please, if I overlook it, let me know. Okay.
I will let you know, Bob.
Pardon me?
I will let you know if he checks in.
Okay, thank you. An entertaining motion to approve the minutes of February 26th, 2020.
So, Mr. Small.
Yes, Mr. Colony. Do you have a question?
No, just motioning.
Okay, Mr. Small motioned, Mr. Colony seconded.
Sure.
Any discussion? Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Chris Howard. Mike Jones.
Yes.
Robbie O'Brien. Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bob, yes. Thank you. Entertaining motion to accept the minutes of April 8th, 2020.
Mr. Small makes that motion.
Second, Mr. Boyce.
Okay, did you get that, Michelle?
Much better, much better.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Steve.
Yes.
Dawn.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Chris Howard.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Rob O'Brien. Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Excuse me, Ally.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay. Superintendent's report, remote learning and school closure updates.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Before we begin with that, I just want to make everybody aware that today is Administrative Assistance Day. And I think we have the best administrative assistant on the Zoom right now, taking the minutes for her. So I just want to acknowledge Michelle Lindberg and give her a round a little bit for all the hard work she's doing. Working around.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you.
Good job, Shelley.
Thank you.
It's a reference to comment earlier, if anybody else wants to take the minutes, they can.
The, since we've had the COVID crisis in the district, Michelle is really, the all essential offices stepped up. But Michelle is on the clock 24/7, making sure all the things that I have to get out to the community are done promptly and efficiently. So we really appreciate her today. As far as remote close, the closure, as you all know, the governor extended the closure out for the duration of the school year. The Commission of Education is going to make some modifications to the remote learning process on Friday. I think Whitman Hansen is in a very good spot. The commissioner is focusing in or the focus is going to be on power standards. The standards that we think are the most, the most important for kids to have this year before they re-enter school in September. So that is the rollout on Friday. However, based upon what we've been doing with our leadership team and with our teachers, I think we're in a very good spot. Parents couldn't expect major changes to our process. The other shout out outside of Michelle is, I really want to, our teachers has done a hell of a job. For those of you who are teaching your students at home right now, parents that are listening, and I know some of you on this committee are parents who are working and trying to teach students at home, it's a daunting task. I ran into that situation this morning when I was trying to help my two kids with their online assignments and what they were doing while multitasking, doing my job. So I want to shout out to all the home educators out there that are doing it. But our teachers are doing a great job and I think our principals supporting them and giving direction have done yeoman's work over this timeframe. And we really have a great team in this district and we really have a great community and we're working really hard. So I just wanted to publicly give everybody a pat out from parents at home, students that are working, to our teachers in their virtual classrooms and our administrative staff have done a really good job of this. So again, I don't anticipate major changes to the learning plan going forward. The commissioner has also spelled out and started to prep us for what summer might look like as far as any type of remediation or any type of extended school year programs for our special ed kids. It might not look the same as what we've had in the past. We might have to do some distancing within the schools. We might have to have kids wear gloves and masks. We don't know. And we don't really know what it's going to look like in the fall. More guidance will follow. Hopefully Massachusetts and the rest of the country will come over the hump or over the curve and flatten it. And we can get back to some sense of normalcy once we enter the classroom in September. George and I have kind of put a, any type of extracurricular events in the schools over the summer at this point. We don't know what's going to happen. Again, with any type of guidelines that come out from our DPHs or from the governor's office, but Conley Camp and some of those camps that run over the summer, we've kind of put a stop into that at this point because of the cease of the school year. We might have some extended year programs or summer program. We might have some building use things over the summer. I know some dance companies have already inquired, but we've ceased all of that at this point because we don't know what the guidelines are going to be. The other hot topic, and I had a conversation with, we set a meeting up last week for yesterday with the Superintendent's Council, and I spoke to the members of the Superintendent's Council. And purposely, I purposely set the meeting up for when I knew the commissioner or the governor was going to lay out that school was closed. So I could get some of their reactions and their thoughts moving forward. And the big topic is graduation and the end of the year events or milestone events. And we have not canceled graduation. It's not going to happen on the traditional graduation day at this point as school is closed. But we're looking at dates in July and August. The later the better as we get more guidance on social distancing. Some folks have already sent me, more than one person, in fact, less than 12 have now sent me ideas on graduation. And we're sending them out to the kids right now to get their ideas on what they would like to do. The most important piece that came out of that council meeting was the students really appreciated what the teachers, what the administrators, what the community has done for them during this time. And they just wanted to acknowledge publicly that they appreciate everything and all the good thoughts that have gone into making their end of year that has now ceased as they knew it as best they can. And nobody's terminated anything, nobody's canceled anything. We're still trying to be optimistic, although cautiously, of what we can do. And one of the ideas that they really think is important for closure for the seniors especially, since they can't really say goodbye to their teachers and it's really not the end of the year is doing a senior drive by or do a couple loops around the school in their vehicles, doing a semi parade. And we'll work with our local FDs and PDs to make that happen for them. The other thing that's on our plate that we haven't had discussions yet, as the commissioner just put it out there, is how we're going to retrieve or close school out, how kids are going to retrieve their items in their lockers, in their desks. We don't have a plan yet because we don't have guidance yet. So that'll roll out within the next week or two of how we're going to do it. Is it going to be building based? Is it going to be grade level? Is it going to be alphabetical? Who's going to staff it? We haven't had an opportunity to discuss with the leadership team. It's going to roll out, but that is something in place that we know kids are going to have to come in and get their gear from their lockers. Elementary kids are going to have to clean out their desks of things that are there. So those are bullet items that we're going to address leadership wise and I'll share with the committee and the community as we determine those. George, did I miss anything as far as the closure stuff?
No, not at all. As early as tomorrow, we have things that we have to discuss as far as students who need their medicines. We opened up schools for the students who needed their medicines for the short duration up till May 4th. So that's one of the topics we'll talk about tomorrow at our leadership. And then those long range plans. What do those long range plans look like for closure? And then what are those, what are the plans that look like for opening? The only thing we really, like Jeff said, is the standards that we're going to address when we hear from the commissioner. But Jeff did a good job summing up what we learned on a state level and what we've already transpired to our building based leaders so we can move forward collectively.
As of today, we have 37 more days of remote learning. So seniors usually do the senior countdown, the superintendents doing the virtual countdown right now of 37 more school days till the 15th. The seniors want to know when they're going to get out. Dr. Jones and I spoke yesterday that seniors' last day will be the traditional last day on the school calendar for them. And we'll go from there. Does anyone on the committee have any questions as far as the remote learning or the closures at this point?
Mr. Small goes up first. He had a question, then Dawn, then Dan. Fred?
Mine was more, wanted to make sure that our teachers were acknowledged for the great job that they've been doing, you know, under unknown circumstances. You stole my thunder on that one, but that's okay. I don't think we can say it too much either. The second thing, in having a conversation with one of the members of our board of selectmen here in Whitman yesterday afternoon, just talking about frustrations and geez, we got to really try and do something for these seniors. Yeah, geez, what about a parade? Lo and behold, he mentioned it last night at the selectmen's meeting and it was received nicely. So, you know, that's just something to toss into the mix. Maybe the towns do something as well as the school district to acknowledge, you know, what these kids are actually missing. You know, it's just a darn shame, you know, that it's happening.
Can I add right on to that, Fred, before we go to the next?
Sure.
So, so one of the things we also, Dr. Jones and I talked about when this first happened. I know that when Mr. Hayes speaks at our commencement for our senior class, he always says, you know, once a panther, you're always a panther. And one of the things that Dr. Jones and I also talked about was after our commencement, when we have our seniors class of 2020 graduate from high school, we might hold another event if possible for the class of 2020, who's gotten, who's getting an associate's degree, who's getting a bachelor's degree, who graduated from Whitman Hansen and acknowledge them publicly because they've all lost their commencements from their colleges and universities as well. So we're looking at recognizing our graduate alumni who have now since lost their next commencement and are hurting just like our seniors. So we're planning that. The challenge for that is we don't have a timeline because of this virus. So, but that's in the works as well. It's not going to be hand in hand with our high school graduation. But if we still have a formal graduation, we'll keep the setup for the next day. We'll keep all the flowers, we'll keep the entire setup so we can acknowledge our graduates who are post-grad, so to speak, graduating from a tech school, from a trade school, from a community college or from their four-year degree because they've missed that as well. And I've had a couple of alumni reach out and say they've missed a senior year as well from their institution. So we want to keep that in mind. And I think that adage of once a, they're always a panther, if we can do something for them as well, we're going to work through that. Not to take away from our senior class this year, but something additional.
Great idea, I think, great idea.
Dawn.
Thanks, Jeff. I like that idea too because they were all class of 2020, no matter where they graduated from. So I like that.
Absolutely.
And I think to follow Fred, I can't say enough, as a parent of a high school and middle school student, thank you to the teachers. Thank you. I heard from Mrs. Horton from the office. I've heard from many people reaching out, so thank you. No change anticipated with the learning plan, as you've said. Question I had from a parent around middle school grading. Can you just confirm right now it has been sort of a credit, no credit? And we're getting the message middle school wise, it's optional. And I know in the beginning it was, you know, take care of yourself and so forth. But is there any reinforcement as we do have 37 more days sort of to give those students who want to continue? I mean, do you get what I'm saying? You know, can we reinforce some of the learning?
It's still credit, no credit. I think the grading issue is challenging, especially with the demographic and trying to keep equity. However, there is an expectation that middle school students are doing something academic, two and a half hours a day.
Okay.
You know, so the expectation is three hours in high school, two and a half hours in middle school and two to two and a half hours in elementary school a day. So I know teachers are giving out assignments and for a teacher to jump through a screen and say, you know, I'm demanding you do that, that's becoming a challenge. And that's where we want some parent engagement from that. And if parents are saying their kids are, and I think a 13-year-old middle school boy is probably going to say, hey, I'm done for the year. But we're going to try to engage them the best way we can and keep some learning going so that they don't remediate. The conversation I had with my fourth grade daughter who didn't want to do anything was, well, we're going to have to just make it up in tutoring over summer school. So, you know, we have to do things now if you don't want to do it. She bought right into that. So if the parents are having issues with their kids connecting and they're not saying, I'm concerned with the teacher giving, not instruction, but stuff for them to do. If the kid's not putting it back, the teacher's going to reach out. The counselor in the middle school is going to reach out. The assistant principal will then reach out. But if parents need help with that engagement, we can also help. So contacting the Mr. Grable or Mr. Trant or Mr. Velviss or Ms. Sandler would be my best advice and direction.
Okay, right, because the comment was specific, a certain email, I guess the student had read it and the word optional was there. So the parent had to then, you know, talk, well, optional, but you still need to. So thank you for the reminder of the two and a half hours.
There's an expectation of learning and that's coming from the commissioner. We didn't modify his direction and that's an expectation from us. You know, so if kids are having trouble engaging and I can see, can see it's a challenge, you know. Luckily, the weather hasn't been good, but come May, middle of May, when it's 95 degrees outside and Joey's supposed to do two hours of work, it's going to be a challenge. And this is a challenge for all of us. So if parents need help with their engagement with their children, let the building administrator know and we'll try to go from there. It's also important, we are reaching out. If we don't hear back from kids, if they're not engaging at all, we are working with local PDs to do wellness checks to make sure people are okay. Because it did come across my desk that we do still have quite a few hungry families out there, families that don't have transportation, that can't access our food pantries and our food services is continuing their delivery. So things might have changed in the households. Mom and dad might be out of work and finances have become a problem. I still ask folks to reach out to me and I'll connect them with our food services people to get them as much breakfast and lunch that we can.
Thank you. That was going to be my last question. Are we reaching all students? And yeah, are we checking in on those who, we don't want anyone to fall through the cracks? That's important, so thank you.
I think that's the shout out that I gave to the building administrators. Anytime they can't, if they felt a child is not connecting, either through the teacher, the counselor or them, they're actually letting George and I know. And right now, there's just a slim few and we've actually had to get DCF involved just to make sure everything was okay.
Thank you.
Dan.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay. I just wanted to find out because we're, the possibility that this could go on into the fall maybe. Have we heard anything about like for our IT, like to handle this, like from the state? Are they going to be able to, you make sure we can have all our students participate? Adding wireless access points possibly? Additional Chromebooks that we can't, you know, we don't have, but we need to supply for these students to learn? And maybe, you know, expanding our infrastructure to handle it better?
So.
Go ahead, George.
So what's taking place right now is that a survey has gone out to every administration of every town in the district from the Department of Ed. This is talking about those very same things that you're saying, Dan. The second thing is that the federal government is in the process of trying to release a stimulus package for those, we'll call them COVID, COVID issues that we would need to do and it would be hopefully available mid-May. So those things, they have told us so far, we have not seen any parameters, but they had told us so far that you would be able to qualify for these funds, run it through like we do every other grant and the things would be very wide ranging. And the words they used specifically were not only cleaning, but technology in order to support. So we are trying to make sure that we're doing those things. And there should be, if we qualify and if we're available for it, some of the funds coming in to try to make sure that all students have the connectivity that they need. We're still getting reports. We have over 400 and I believe 80 Chromebooks that are out now. We have stopped that except in very specific cases. But there's a process that they have to go through now just for the health and safety of all of our people. And, but we are finding that if there is a need and there is contact, we are still doing our best to make sure that we can get them what we need for what we have. The question you're raising is what happens when we lose what we have? There is some word and there is some funding that we may be available for from the federal government. There's also a governor's package that's coming out federally, but will impact our governor also so that we may be able to qualify for additional funds there. The specifics aren't out, only the big picture of it is now.
You good, Dan?
Yeah, because you already answered the retrieval of kids and teachers' properties. So that was handled earlier.
And once we figure that out, we'll roll that out. But we want to be cautious about right now, if you're watching the news, which everybody is, we're right in the middle of it. So we're being very cautious and letting the committee know, letting the public know that I have barely anybody in the buildings now. We, all our secretaries are home. The phone is going, the voicemail, they're retrieving the voicemail, but nobody is in the offices answering the phones. It's rare that Michelle went in for a few minutes today to get some documents. We're still making sure everything we have to sign, we do. But building based, there's really no one in the buildings at this point for the health and safety of all of our employees. Technology is working virtually. That's why we've stopped the distribution of the Chromebooks. We did three major distributions. Now it's a case by case. We just don't want to endanger any of our employees to this virus. As everyone here knows, we have employees that have had this and are fighting it right now. Nobody's been hospitalized thankfully, but it's, the word I hear is it's a beast. And we don't want to infect any of our staff if we don't have to. So we've taken every precaution, following the governor's guidelines of working from home if we need to. And essentially, if I go in to sign a document, if the business department is in, John is in there because it is still business as usual, bills have to be paid, payroll has to go. But everybody's using the precautions that we've laid out and that the governor's laid out.
Circling back to when we talk about Panther Nation, we do have people in both towns that are struggling, that are out of work. Both food pantries have been in contact with us and they are having a desperate need for services bigger than they've ever had. So if anyone watching the school committee meeting from Panther Nation or to do with Panther Nation, keeping one thing in mind, you can stop by the Hanson Food Pantry and donate money and they have the opportunity to buy food at a discount rate from the Pine Street. I think it's called the Boston Food Bank. Also in Whitman, the Lamatinas, led by their eighth grade student, are selling signs that say Whitman Strong with a big heart on them for $15. $10 of that goes directly to the food pantry. They've already sold over 400 signs. It's an unbelievable fundraiser. The Whitman KFC, I believe, is handling some of the sales. The Lamatinas are delivering them. They delivered some to me today. If you need a sign on 808 Bedford Street in Whitman, I would be more than happy to accommodate you with $1, $10, $30. They're $15 apiece and it's helping feed Panther Nation and many other people in the towns of Whitman and Hanson that are struggling during this very difficult time. So kudos to everybody who's pulling the wagon to keep everybody safe and to keep everybody fed. So anybody that wants to donate, like I said, the Whitman Food Pantry or the Hanson Food Pantry on High Street, get at it because we're doing the best we can and everybody in town's doing an unbelievable job. Imagine an eighth grade student getting this idea, putting these signs together. She sold 450 of them or so so far. It's unbelievable. Kudos to her, great, great job. Anything else before we move on to Director of Business? Jeff, go ahead.
Thanks. So I'm going to ask to pass over, I'm not putting forth a finalist candidate today, but I just wanted to talk to the committee a little bit about the importance of this position and the process that we've had so far. As you know, the John Tuffy has been, has been doing a heck of a job filling in part-time. The absence of a business director has been difficult in our central office. As a full-time employee, as our other folk have tried to support that absent full-time position. When we posted this position, we had 11 applicants, three of which were certified as business managers. I don't think there's anything in our, in our policy that says specifically that we need to have a certified candidate. However, there is a DESI certification for business manager and I think it's important that we have one. So we had three certified candidates. One person took a position and we interviewed the other two. We're still vetting those candidates. But I think it's important that, I know we survive and I call it surviving without a full-time person, but it's really not, not having somebody has prohibited both George and I from putting forth some of our time in areas that we should be putting our time in. And I'm finding out as I talk to other superintendents, what a business manager actually does or a business director does. And something crucial that we haven't had for a few years is somebody that's going to provide a vision for the finances for the district, looking at enrollment projections, looking at decreases of enrollment and then helping the superintendent kind of plan out financially what our financial picture is going to be if we were to be normal, take away COVID-19 and the revenue thing. But what would a normal budget look like in fiscal '23, '24, '25, '26? And that would actually help us plan. That hasn't happened. And because, you know, I think John is the right person for that, but he's part-time and he's retired. And I don't have the vision that he wants to stay as a full-time person. And I'm not watching him on this video, but he's probably shaking his head right now. No. But I think it's important that we have someone who's qualified for the position. And I just want to remind the committee, I was hired as the principal in 2010. And at that point, we had two assistant superintendents in central office. We had a director of technology and an assistant director of technology. And we had two accounts payable people in central office. We have one assistant superintendent. We don't have a director of technology. We don't have an assistant director of technology. And we did not replace a person who retired in central office. And we're functioning right now with a part-time business manager in John Tuffy. So it's essential that we get the right candidate for this position. And if, we will present the candidate that we feel it will fit our team when the time comes. But I know that we're looking at a tough budget cycle and we're looking for things outside the box to potentially save some revenues or save some things in our budget. But this is a position that I think we really need to hit it out of the park for our team, for our district. And I will also let you know, the candidate pool out there is less than a puddle. It's raindrops. So we will do our best to bring forth a candidate that we think will fit us as a community and us as a central office. Currently, there is no one in district that is looking for this position. We've asked a few of our folks upstairs if they'd be interested in becoming certified and they're not interested in that, for that right now, either because of they're getting close to retirement or that's not the avenue that they want to go. So we will keep you up to date when we. Um so we will keep you up to date when we can get a candidate for you to interview. But I also want to explain this process. This isn't my hire. Uh we will vet that person. George, myself, and John will vet that person, present the candidate. But you're feel you're free to ask as many questions as candidates. This is a school committee appointment. Um this is your hire. So for whenever we present that, I think I we have members on the team that that on this committee that weren't there when when our past business manager were hired. So I just wanted to give you that uh update that it's it's your hire, it's your selection process. And um it's a majority majority vote to put that person in in the position.
So John, if you were listening to that uh message from the superintendent. I'm changing the locks on the building so you can't leave, so bring a sleeping bag.
It's pretty quiet there right now.
Thank you for what you do.
Yeah, John John has done a great job. I I he's helped. He's not only and and we're going to keep him on board. I think he doesn't know, but he's going to work probably through August now. But uh uh but he's been a mentor to both George and myself and uh because of his experience as a business manager. And as a superintendent, but he's a man of character and what we putting us in a in a good position. Even in this fiscal downplay, he's had us, he he keeps us calm. So I want to thank him as well um publicly again.
Any questions? I'm sliding back and forth. Make sure no one's got their hand up. Okay. Regional regional amendment agreement amendment committee report. We just got out of that meeting. Mr. Small, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
One quick question. Uh so the candidate that we were bringing forward is now out of contention?
I I didn't say that. I just said I wasn't presenting him today.
I just was looking for that clarification. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Okay, regional agreement amendment committee report, Jeff and Chris and.
So we were just on and I'll I'll shoot this over to Chris Scriven as the Chair of the Regional Agreement Committee. Uh briefly, uh last week we met, we met again today at four o'clock at the last meeting. Um the committee asked me to contact Mass Association of Regional Schools, Mac Reed and Steve Hemmon. Um uh got a lit, we gathered some questions. Michelle worked through the holiday on Monday to gather questions. They send out to Mac and 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 Steve. I think we sent more than forty questions to them. Uh and they put together a presentation today to answer those questions to the regional agreement committee and Mr. Scriven, if you want to add to that.
I didn't get the very last part, but um I would only say if you didn't, Jeff, that we add a couple of members to our committee.
That's true, yes.
Yep, um just to be just to comply with the official vote we took in the school committee, just a little oversight. Um so Frank. Linum and um I'm sorry, I forget the other gentleman's name from Hanson.
Ken McCormick.
Ken McCormick was added to the committee. Um and uh we agreed to hold off on our objectives. Until um we meet again next week and that'll give time for uh some of the members to ask some additional questions. Um to Mars, but that I just want to thank them publicly. They did a great job, really clarified a lot of our our questions. I appreciate that.
Well, again, the the meeting wasn't real lengthy, but I want to thank all the members that were there on the Zoom to try and, you know, everybody's trying to come to a conclusion. And they're all working very hard. So Dawn was first and then Mr. Howard. Go ahead, Dawn.
A question you mentioned, Ken McCormick, what is his role from Hanson? I don't I'm not.
He's a finance committee member from Hanson.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Chris.
Actually, I'm sorry. Sorry, Chris. Is it possible you can run down what the makeup of that committee is just to refresh on all the members, just for people who are listening?
Yeah, so uh the members are myself, Chris Howard, Frank Linum, Justin Evans. Um I'll Frank said Whitman Town Administrator, Justin is Whitman Board of Selectmen, Rick Anderson, Whitman Finance Committee uh Chair. Uh Chris George, uh Community Member at Large from Whitman. Matthew Dyer, um Selectman um from Hanson, Laura Kemmett. Um she's the uh I believe Laura's the Chair, right? From. Um and yeah, so Ken McCormick um from um Hanson Finance Committee. And Bruce Young is the Hanson Community Member at Large. Non-voting members, uh Jeff Simonak, George Pharaoh, uh John Stanbrook, who's a town administrator from Hanson, and Bob Hayes.
Keep going, Dawn.
They have two. So Justin Evans is one Board of Selectmen from Whitman and two Hanson Board of Selectmen.
The representation is equal. We we the way it was worded in our um vote um approved by the school committee was uh it was up to them, whether it was a selectman. Or town administrator. So they they for example, the.
Okay.
Hanson Town Administrator is not a voting member.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Tony, either or. Chris and Fred. Okay, Dawn?
Yeah. The only thing I wanted to add, just a couple of things that I think would be helpful for the committee. Um in from today's conversation uh a little while ago was uh a good conversation with Mars. Uh one of the things they clarified, I think, at least what I heard today, was the utilization of. The agreement that we uh previously amended as kind of being the base model. So I think that'll require a kind of a a deeper dive in terms of making sure that we're amending that uh as a group. For then subsequent presentation back to the school committee. Uh and then there were a couple of data points that that I thought were interesting that came out of the questions. I think they were shared with the school committee as a whole. Um one was, I mean, it would I think it's the last bullet on the document that was sent by Michelle earlier. Um one item was uh what they said was moving from an enrollment-based assessment. To the statutory assessment method is a rare situation that has been resolved in a couple of districts. With a phased-in readjustment of the assessments over a five or six-year period. So that was just a data point uh from their experience that they threw out. The other thing that they said, uh which was interesting, there was some some conversation, discussion around. Uh what the school committee had voted in terms of the assessment methodology. Uh and in their opinion, what they suggested as part of that was that uh because no action had been taken and specifically the budget had not been certified. That uh in their opinion, the assessment methodology could could be changed. So um those are just a couple of things that they threw out there. Um I think we got a lot of work to do, but I just wanted to at least make sure the committee was aware of a couple of those data points.
Mr. Small, then Mr. Boyce.
I just wanted to, uh Mr. Scriven, uh I am the alternate member from Whitman uh School Committee on the on the uh committee. And you failed to mention that once again, so just wanted to bring that to your attention.
My apologies, Fred.
No problem.
Mr. Boyce.
So uh the um thirty questions that came from Jeff today, are they going to be supplied with written answers?
Um and and. What I had planned on doing, Steve, to not not to interrupt you, but I was going to ask Michelle if she would print those for the committee. And print the answers that Mars gave to those questions so that all ten of us have that. In our next packet, because I'm going to be asking you to meet again next week. I think there's going to be some other discussions that the school committee has to make as we move forward. As far as um different stuff to do with employment and that Jeff could discuss. So.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, Michelle sent those, I think it's six twenty-two tonight. So if you haven't gotten them yet, I think.
Oh, okay.
That's right.
All right. And my my other question had to do with Chris Howard was saying um. We could be looking at something different. So what is that? Do we know? What are we what are we referring to?
I think Chris, I can't speak for him, but I think Chris is just talking about the questions and some of the answers that came forward.
Okay.
If that answers you, unless, Chris, can you answer that in more de- more definite than?
Yeah, so Steve, I don't know which part about the which agreement we're using or the two uh data points.
Yeah, for for basically for which agreement. So uh um I know you said something that, you know, Mars or or whomever. Hadn't seen something like this, but I think before that you were saying that we as a committee would have to make a. Probably have to make a decision on either modifying or doing something different.
Yeah, so let me clarify that. So um in in my mind, what I was trying to figure out going into this was, were we using the existing? Nineteen ninety-one agreement? Or were we using the agreement that the school committee had essentially voted approved that went to both towns and never passed? And and what uh Mars suggested was using the agreements that had been amended and modified. Approved by the school committee previously and that had gone to both towns and not passed as kind of our base model. So that's that.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. I know Dawn Dawn referenced that at the last meeting, so thank you. That's that's.
Start working from there, I think is what I heard today.
Okay, thank you.
Chris?
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but um the agreement. You mentioned referring to was uh preliminarily approved by uh.
By D E S I.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, Dawn and Fred. Dawn?
I I was able to listen to um I think the first half of that meeting. I I do recall the Mars representatives also acknowledging our agreement from nineteen ninety-one. More or less became invalid at nineteen ninety-three with Education Reform Act. And I appreciate, I did hear the phase in part about five to six years and changing from a per pupil to statutory um is unusual. But I think the uh we should recognize the understanding is probably that that phase in. Should have, would have come back in nineteen ninety-three. Um that's really, they were trying to send a message that agreement. From what I heard, it was not is not valid or has not been valid um with that method. So maybe this is for discussion after everyone's had a chance to hear the meeting in full and and review all the notes. Um but I wanted to bring up what I did here as far as that.
Well, Dawn, what I'd like to do, Michelle can hear me, we're going to Fred and then we're going to Chris. Um is I we're going to print all that for the committee so they can review it as as the amendment committee moves forward.
Thank you.
Fred, then Chris.
You know, my interpretation, just as uh someone listening, that the ninety-one regional agreement. Uh is not a valid document. Uh but they also did say that one part of an agreement that is invalid. Does not mean the entire agreement is invalid. Uh so it's sort of the pick and choose. Uh they made reference to statutory, the statutory method needing to be referenced in any. Uh agreement as we go forward, uh so to speak. I mean, there's a lot to cover, you know, throughout that meeting, you know, as far as that goes. But from what I could gather and what I understood was the statutory method. Uh would be referenced in any new agreement. And has to be referenced in any new agreement, even with an alternative method stated. Uh but our nineteen ninety-one agreement is no longer quote unquote valid. Uh and I think that was using their words, maybe paraphrasing slightly.
Chris?
Yeah, so I'll I'll um. I'll I'll clearly that I did not hear Mars say that our agreement was invalid. So I know Jeff, Chris, Bob, you guys were in that meeting too. They they did not say that. They may have said there was a section. Uh that education reform superseded, but they clearly said, and it's in the written documents, that the. Just because there's a section of the agreement that's invalid, it does not invalidate the entire agreement. I think that's just important for the folks listening. We we have a valid regional agreement.
Chris?
I believe the words were um some of the uh sections of the uh ninety-one agreement weren't in compliance. And that's what we are working towards to uh when we form the first regional agreement committee to be in compliance.
Yeah, I I believe that's what I heard too. Fred?
And forgive me if I didn't articulate it clearly. What I was trying to articulate was. That the agreement from nineteen ninety-one is not a completely valid agreement. There are portions of it and that I made mention, you know, that they said one portion does not completely. You know, disavow the entire agreement. Uh so if I didn't articulate that clearly, I want to apologize. So it wasn't my intent.
I think we're all saying the same thing. We're just we're picking at it a little bit. Again, I want to thank everybody for taking their time this afternoon. I know that uh these Zoom meetings are not real, real easy to do and. We're all we're all getting through it, so thank you all. Anything else about the regional agreement committee report? I will have it printed and presented to you, emailed, so you can look it over and and see what Mars clearly had to say. And again, thanks to Steve Hemming and Mac Reed for spending their time with us this afternoon. They they very, very valid points. Anyone else? I'm looking on the other page. No hands up. Okay, two thousand twenty-one budget and local assessment. I'm going to read to you a question that was asked to Christine Lynch of the Department of Education, and then I'll read to you what her answer was. Oh, Ms. Lynch, I know we spoke previously and you were extremely healthy. Helpful. Unfortunately, as you're aware, we're still having issues with our regional district assessment. It seems as if we are heading towards a one-twelfth budget. My question is this, when are, if that happens due to the change in methodology to statutory method? The town of Whitman's contribution would drop from FY twenty. I understand that we cannot pay less than the previous year, so would we receive? Our under the assessment, under the one-twelfth, and be obligated to pay the difference to make our payments equal to last year's. Ultimately, giving the district slightly more than one-twelfth level funded budget from the previous year. Just looking for some guidance. I hope this was not too confusing. Thank you very much. Respectfully, Randy Lamatina Selectman. I'm very happy that he asked that question of her. And here is her answer. Unfortunately, many, if not most, regional school districts will be under a one-twelfth budget this year. The department will be issuing guidelines soon to help districts as well as member towns navigate this process. Under a one-twelfth budget process, the commissioner will set an interim budget. For a district that generally is not less than the previous fiscal year's FY twenty budget. However, member assessments would change from the previous fiscal year due, for example, to changes in minimal. Minimum local contributions, enrollment shares, and potential increases or decreases in state aid or other general fund revenues. Assessments may be calculated from the same total budget as FY twenty. But will not be based on updated FY twenty-one factors as noted above. Therefore, if the calculation of your assessment for FY twenty-one based on updated factors. Results in a decrease from the previous year, you would not be expected to pay the same amount as you did in FY twenty. Likewise, however, if your assessment increases over FY twenty. Based on FY twenty-one factors, you would be expected to pay the increased amount. I am including the superintendent on this email. As you have asked a good question and it is important that everyone has the same information on this issue. The guidelines, once issued, hopefully will explain this process more fully. Please let me know, however, if you have any additional questions. Chris Lynch. Now, as we heard today, is going to be. Some guidance coming out on this possibly Friday morning about this very subject. I think Jeff, you and I heard that pretty loud and clear and anybody that was listening to Mac Reed and Steve Hemming. Heard the same thing. They're going to be talking about this on Friday. So I know that the budget and the local assessment, Jeff's going to get in that. But keep in mind, I'd like to have a meeting next Wednesday because I'm not trying to keep you guys in meetings every week, but this budget information. Is coming different daily and we I know you I keep putting my phone up so I could read. I keep blocking the camera. I'm looking at my bald head saying I can't even see myself. But anyway, this is changing rather quickly, so I I would ask that you bear you bear with me and we have a meeting again next week. Jeff, would you like to take over about the budget?
So so yeah, the we still need to get a budget out of committee um at some point. The the challenge for that right now, too, as as Bob said, we're getting guidance with with with. The new with covid and the fact that town meetings are moving around. Uh there was supposed to be a a conference call on regional districts today at noon. Uh John Tuffy, George and I were in the waiting room for about twenty-five minutes and they moved that meeting till next Monday. Uh I'm waiting to hear guidance on how a one-twelfth budget will look for regional schools uh on Friday. I'm looking for some guidance there. Um but people have. The superintendent's list serve every meeting that we've had with anybody in from Jay Sullivan, the bill, I forgot his last name, from D E S I, the CFO. They said, it looks like districts are going to be in a one-twelfth budget because of the lateness. Or the or the fact that some some districts or some towns aren't going to have town meetings until June or even July, if they can have them. So they they talked about the preparation of a one-twelfth. Um the one thing I I I will tell you, uh because of the closure and because of the the. And because of the, the, the finality of it yesterday, uh, I will be gathering numbers for this committee. Um, with uh, with John uh, from facilities, from athletics. We won't have a spring season this year. Uh, we work with the association to give an honorarium to our varsity coaches that have already worked with their teams. Um, some folks have asked, well, what have they done if they haven't had a season? Our coaches are, at least at, at the varsity level, have kept the kids engaged. Uh, to, to workouts or through things virtually so that they've had something to be, to have an opportunity or, or be optimistic about. Uh, they're also gonna, these varsity coaches are gonna pick up the pieces, but we will see some savings in athletics this year. We will see some savings in, in, in um. Cleaning from SJ. We will see some savings in utilities. We just don't know those savings yet. Because we've kinda had, you know, May, May fourth as a, as a target date of our, of our return. So. At our next meeting, hopefully, uh, if, if we're having another meeting next week, uh, um. John and I will be able to get you some figures on some of the, the revenues we might be able to recover because of this crisis. The other thing I heard uh, from Chair Hayes uh, through Ms. Kemet. Uh, through Josh Cutler this weekend is that there might be some federal monies for us. Uh, in, in, in any expenditures we've had due to COVID. So I would say our deep cleaning that we were estimating at a hundred thousand dollars. Would be a, would be a dollar figure that I'd send to the Fed as part of this. Anything we might have to restock as far as PPE, because we've given out PPE uh, that we've had to recover. Anything that we could say is COVID related, uh, anything uh, that we can tie into. Some sort of recovery that we've had to expend because of the virus, I would tack on to that federal, federal uh, dollar amount. Or that federal grant. I don't know when that's gonna come through and, and. I think Mr. O'Brien was on it last, last, last meeting. He said. He'd help out with any type of federal grant for recovery, but he's like, don't anticipate the money for, you know, it's not gonna be a check in the mail on July one. It could take some time. Um, but if we do have monies that we can recover, um. Because of COVID, I would ask the committee, once we have that dollar amount and once we can finalize it, to put it in E and D and if we could uh. To offset any, any, any depreciations in revenue we might have from the state. The only thing I will say is I'm also, I have a bill and I mentioned this to the committee. Once we stopped. Tuitioning for pre-K and for kindergarten, we have a deficit. I have my, now that we finalized uh, the school year. I have my business folks running numbers with the, with the actual cost uh, that, that we will be deficient because of lack of tuition. Um, so there's a lot of moving pieces in the FY twenty budget right now. There, there is gonna be a, uh, I'm not gonna. The deficit, but we're not gonna, the revolving account for full day and for pre-K uh, are gonna be at a def- uh, deficiency. However, we will have not, we won't have the expenditures potentially for some SJ services. Um, for athletics, uh, for some transportation and other costs that we might not have to uh, to spend money on. The other piece that we negotiated through North River Collaborative last week is uh, North River is gonna furlough. Their van drivers now for the duration of the school year. We will see a fifty percent um. Revenue, uh, fifty, we will see a, uh, uh, they're only gonna charge us fifty percent. I'm looking for the words. They're only gonna charge us fifty percent. Uh, of our sped transportation from April twenty-seventh through the duration of the year. So we will see a cost savings. On um, our sped transportation, at least using the North River Collaborative. Uh, John or George, do you wanna jump in on any deficit or revenues that you see that I missed?
Before you move on, I'm getting a text. Um, Jeff, both of those, the, the COVID nineteen. Funding could be coming both from state and local and federal. Josh Cutler's working very hard at the state level, trying to make it happen. And the federal government is also talking about, I just wanted to clarify that. You know, that's going on and Josh has been uh, supporting legislation and bringing things forward and pushing it and so uh. So has Allison Sullivan and um. A, a state senator from Brockton, Mr. Brady. They're all working hard for our school districts.
Thank you. George and, and John, do you wanna chime in?
On anything? Yeah, this is John. Um. Some conversations have also started with Department of Revenue, which is the other state agency that we care a lot about. Um, about what they're looking for and, and what sorts of things that we'll be able to do. Some of it. Would be helpful. There's talk that we'll be able to create a receivable if we know that we're gonna be getting. Funding from FEMA that, that would mean that we would not have to um, lose all of our E and D. Uh, that, that they would allow us to create a receivable. That they felt comfortable with. There's also talk about allowing us to amortize some expenses. If it looks like it's gonna be particularly burdensome, they let us do those sorts of things in two thousand and fifteen after the winter. And then finally, the discussion that's going back and forth seems to focus on. Will, will the grant programs that we see look a lot like what we saw in two thousand and nine after the, after the market crash? Where an awful lot of federal money wound up being, being targeted but funneled through the state. So it was federal money funded through the state, which is the way we get. The bulk of our grants, um, but targeted for schools. So we wouldn't be competing with cities and towns or, or other entities. But all of that is, is weeks, if not months, away from, from final action.
I also have, Fred, I'll get to you in a second. There's another communication from Department of Education and Secondary Education. And Mass Association and Regional School Committees. I'm not sure if everyone got this email or not, but I'll read it so the people can. Understand it. Mars is continuing to work closely with Desi to provide guidance and information. That will assist attendants and districts in navigating the FY twenty-one budget process. As we know, many municipalities may not have had the opportunity to hold town meetings because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Without approval of the FY twenty-one budget assessments prior to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Desi will be required by statute to set a one-twelfth budget. Operating with a one-twelfth budget is an unfamiliar process for many districts. In order to prepare for this reality, you will be receiving an email with an attached document from Desi by Friday. That outlines the process of setting and implementing a one-twelfth budget, meaning this Friday, this coming Friday. Please review the Desi guidance document. Mars will serve as a clearinghouse for your questions and our comments. Mars will communicate with Desi in preparation for a tentative save the date and time Zoom call on Monday, April twenty-eighth, noon to one. So there is going to be a Zoom call from Desi and Mars on Monday, the twenty-eighth, noon to one. Desi will follow up with invitations to participate in this call. So that's just an, I'm not sure if everyone received that email. I know I've been receiving some stuff and I'm pretty sure the committee has, but I just wanted the, the, the people listening to this to know that. They are very sensitive of what Mars and Desi, which is Mass Association of Regional School Committees. And Department of Education and Secondary Education, that other districts and lots of districts are going to be having the same issue. Fred, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
No problem. You know, a couple of things. One, uh, John, it's my understanding from the folks I've spoken to, exactly the way the money's gonna funnel down from the federal government to the state government. And then from the state to be distributing. And we're fortunate that we do have some champions up on Beacon Hill that do fight for us. So that's a good thing. Uh, have we looked at any of our line items to see if there's some savings rolling over, uh, you know, maybe sublines? Uh, you know, anything else that we're not spending on?
Yes, we're gonna look at everything now that it's official as of yesterday. So we will have some savings. I just don't have those dollar figures. Now, that, that being said.
Okay.
That being said, you know, once we set a budget, the rollover items. We can, we can pull money away from that, that budget that we set. So if we, if we can roll over. Three hundred thousand, and I'm just using three hundred thousand, and my deficit is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in pre-K and K. I would ask the committee to either put that forth in E and D to use for the FY twenty-one budget. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we could take off the budget that I presented. So there will be, there will be some rollovers. It, it, it'll depend on how the committee wants to use those rollovers. Either putting it into E and D uh, and then appropriating it for the FY twenty-one budget or keeping it in, in, in E and D. Uh, but I don't have those numbers today. As of, you know, we have some projections, we had some projections from, from um. March thirteenth to May fourth, uh, and now it'll be March fourteenth, March thirteenth through June fifteenth. Um, and I can, I'll have those numbers, pretty sure I'll have some solid numbers uh, with some project.
You froze.
Jeff, I lost you.
Well, while he's finishing his thought, maybe Mr. Tuffy can answer this question. Uh, do we know what percentage uh, we used assuming for reimbursement for regional transportation in the FY twenty-one budget?
Same amount as last year, which was in the eighties. Now, it seems unlikely that we're gonna see that kind of money next year, given.
We're gonna take a hit. I'm, I'm guessing we're gonna see around seventy percent if we're lucky.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hazard a guess, but I don't think we're gonna see the amount we have now. I mean. We're all hoping that um, when the, when the, we. Finally see a budget which do the next week or so that will be the House budget, although supposedly it's gonna be a combination of House and Senate together. And a serious budget, we'll get a sense of what that's gonna look like.
Yeah, we're, from what I've been hearing, they're talking about even delaying that till September. Uh, for uh, you know, maybe we'll have bits and pieces, but. Uh, delaying everything until September for a vote, until they can get some revenue forecasts sent.
Well, it's, 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 we're almost going back to the old days where we used to see an, an early resol- a local aid resolution. So that cities and towns could um, at least have a number to work with. And then it was well into the legislative year that they finally passed a final budget. And, and uh, that may be the best we can hope for.
Thank you.
A local aid resolution and, and so we know what we have to deal with.
John?
Thanks. Jeff, you mentioned, yes. Jeff, you mentioned the North River um, special ed transportation um, not happening, right? Is that?
Yes.
Um, so does that mean these students are um, not engaged with that school? So the, would there be a tuition? Savings realized or are they working still?
They're working still. Their tuitions, the teachers at North River are still working, just like our teachers are working. We just don't have to transport them.
Okay, um. Yeah, and, and then sort of to piggyback on that, PARs that may have been one-on-one in the district. Um, are they still supporting students um, as best they can remotely? Are we utilizing those PARs still? Yeah.
Do you wanna answer that, George? I saw you shake your head.
Yes, so our paraprofessionals are still working with the groups that they support. Uh, and all of our paraprofessionals have now undergone uh, professional development training. So we're, we're, if they're not directly working with their teachers on a daily basis, they have um, benchmarks that they have to hit. Um, every pay period in order to continue, and we're using this time in order to. Get them better for the students that they're in, the populations that they work with in the hopes that they'll reengage with them shortly.
Okay. Thank you. Um. I think I had another question, but go on. That's fine.
Go ahead, Dawn. Go ahead.
Um. Maybe it was just around um. Any other roles in the school that aren't directly related to student support roles or. Um, I don't know, maybe cafeteria workers, but they're probably still all hands on deck with meals. Um, just.
So, so cafeteria workers, it's a revolving account. Um, it doesn't have anything to do with the district account. However, um, we made a decision uh, actually yesterday and, and cafeteria workers are gonna be furloughed as of uh, Monday. Um, because we can't support that in the revolving account since we're not taking in any money from lunches. Uh, we do have a, a staff on, in play for um, still feeding our kids. Uh, but the other workers are, will be receiving a letter from me.
Okay.
Anyone else? Jeff, do you have any? Chris, go ahead.
No, Chris, Chris Howard. Yeah, so um, you cut out and I'll turn it back over to you, but you, this will kinda help. So um, I think you guys hit on a couple of points in terms of potentially some reimbursements that are coming in. Um, as a result of COVID and starting to quantify some of the operational expense savings as a result of getting the news yesterday. So. Completely understands, you know, I'm sure you've had some other things going on in the last twenty-four hours rather than just quantifying all those, those costs. Um, but if you could quantify some of, get us a sense of those costs and some of those reimbursements, I think that would, at least for me, be very helpful in trying to understand how we could look at that. In terms of kinda setting that budget mark in a manner that hopefully is responsible. At the same time, maybe we have to revisit some of the other things that have been tossed out as well, um, and things that we can do. But you cut out on, you think you're gonna have that information by, and that's where.
Next Wednesday. It'll be, it should be by next Wednesday. Uh, we'll work on that now. I mean, we already, I, I brought all my material home. Last week from, from my office to start sketching it out because I had an idea that the governor was gonna, you know, postpone school. Or close school as we know it uh, for the rest of the year. So, so I started playing with around some, some, some numbers around athletics. I don't have a number as far as utilities, but we should have those, those figures, at least a solid estimate. Uh, to base our, our, our numbers on next Wednesday.
Dawn, go ahead.
I'm sorry, one, I remembered my other thought. We should think about the five, what is it, four hundred and fifty, five hundred Chromebooks that have been loaned out. When those get returned, we may have increased technology costs, repairs, replacement, right? Just a budgetary item to think about.
Correct.
Okay.
Not only repairs and replacement on, but we're gonna have to clean them.
Right.
You know, that's, that's, I mean, it doesn't sound like much, but it's. The, the cleanliness of these buildings is all gonna come into play before September. I mean. There's a lot of moving pieces that are changing as we're talking. In fact, just from last Wednesday, look at, look at what's changed. Until today, I know that superintendent had some budget comparisons and we're talking budget. What's the committee's pleasure? We're going to have a committee meeting next Wednesday, as you heard Friday, and there's gonna be some new information. From Mars and Desi about this one-twelfth budget issue. What's your pleasure? I mean, we, we had uh, we started out last week with a FY twenty-one required budget of fifty-five million forty thousand two thirty-eight. And with the four teachers, it's fifty-five million three hundred and twenty thousand two thirty-eight. I know that there were some questions as to the comparisons for the FY twenty-one and the FY twenty budget. And in your packet or if you're doing it electronically, you can probably see what the changes were. Uh, in that budget. I'll get to you in a second, Fred. Um, so would you like to go over that, Jeff? Or? Cause the committee's gonna have to make a decision on what's going on. And I know this has been happening and we've been. Non-voting it and voting it all different types of ways. And it seems like more information's coming out daily. I'm not trying to push this off, but. There is definitely some new, new information.
So the numbers are the numbers.
Fred and you, Chris.
So I was just gonna say, you can take questions. The numbers are the numbers as they are. Um. I, with, with the closing of school, um, and I hate to say I wanna add, but with the closing of school. If we have larger class sizes next year and kids need remediation because they've lost academic time. Putting twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids in a class is not gonna be beneficial for any of us. That being said, I'm struggling because I don't know what revenues are gonna be like, but I wanted to, for, from the educational aspect of it. Our kids have, although we're remediating, there's going to be a need for certain students to have some extra attention. And if I have a class size of twenty-seven in second grade at Indian Head, Duval or Conley, uh, we're going to struggle. George, I saw you.
Dawn, you're up. And then Fred, then Chris.
The only other thing I'd like to add on that teacher perspective and cuts and everything is that. Now with COVID nineteen, one of the things that the commissioner did say to start thinking about long-range plans is. What if you're six feet apart? Every desk is six feet apart in a classroom. So if, I'll use my experience at Wood Middle, they have trapezoid tables. Um, if you now go to thirty. Students, but you have to be six feet apart, um. You're not, you're gonna outlive the space of your, of your physical classroom. So those things are also gonna play a role with higher class size also as we move forward. So those things are also going to play a role with higher class size also as we move forward. I only bring it up because it was on a listserv today with a number of assistant superintendents that everyone in the state is starting to struggle if, what if you don't put the teacher in front of all the kids as we begin? What that, what might that look like? So I throw that out there. That's all.
Fred, and then Chris Riven, and then Dan Colling. Fred.
Couple of things. Number one, can you lead us through what a one twelfth budget might look like? I know we've talked about it again in the past, but just to reiterate, how many bodies? And what we would be looking at on a one twelfth based upon an FY twenty budget?
So it'd be our, our budget and, and I'm guessing depending upon where, where our employees come from, whether it be parents, teachers, administrators, what have you, it's between thirty-five and, and, and thirty-seven people. But because of unemployment, we're going to have to jack that number up to forty-seven or forty-eight. Does that sound correct, George and John?
Yes.
So we, we're looking at devastation. We're looking at forty-plus kids in the class, if you could even.
Oh, yeah. I, I don't know what, I mean, we're going to do our best at the elementary level. But I think the secondary piece, we're going to have to look hard. If we lose forty-seven people in this district, we lost nineteen point five last year. And we're able, we have class sizes, double that. And, and we're going to have class size issues across the board. We're not going to have any supplies. Forty-eight people's a lot. And coming off, coming off of a timeframe where kids haven't been in a classroom since March, that's a tremendous effect on student learning in this district.
And based upon the information that you gave us earlier, just now, the additional teachers, or the four additional teachers, I think, as we've been discussing, is that considered to be required at this point in time? And or would be in lieu of something different that you would juggle the budget numbers and the priority levels?
Based on where we're at right now, I'd say that it's, it's a priority. Because I think the, the, the fact that we've been out of school and we're going to have a need for, for more attention for certain learners. Those who have, as Ms. Byer said today, have been disengaged potentially. Or because mom and dad are now out of work and they haven't been able to help them at home. The lower the class size, the better. So I would, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic we will be able to get those people in this budget cycle. So I would move those people up or those positions up into that required piece. They're as essential for us right now as the technology people that, that we've moved up there. My fear for next year is that if we do have a resurgence, I'm going to need as much tech support as I possibly can. We were very thin this year. And if we're out at another, for another piece of time next year, or even a couple of weeks where we have to supply kids with more technology, I need those support systems in place. So Mr. Small, yeah, I think at this point, because of the, the, the fact that we're out of school and we can't even get an assessment of where kids are at in a classroom before, before next year, those, those class sizes are definitely the lower the better that we, the lower the better.
Now, would that come ahead of, say, I know we have a curriculum piece that we had been doing without in the priorities?
In my opinion, we haven't had a curriculum since two thousand and one and we're going to ask, yeah, we've prioritized that. And I think we've worked hard to get that curriculum. So I, I, everything that is in required, I don't want to start pulling things out of that, out of that budget until the town says we, we have to pull it up. Everything that we put required is essential for next year.
Chris Riven, and then Dan, and then Don.
Well, I was just responding to your question about the pleasure of the committee in regards to what to do with the budget at this point. And I don't, I think it's best if we hold off and get as much information as we can to, to make, you know, to put forth a budget that we believe in and not just, you know. I think the, the more we educate ourselves, the better. And it's just my opinion on it. I know some people's minds and the uncertainty with the towns can and cannot afford. Looking at how the state revenue is going to be down, we're going to be taking a hit anyways, but we, we're, we're charged with setting a budget to present to the town, whether they pass that budget or not is not up to us. We are just to take what we believe the children of this, this region need in, in the requirements that the superintendent and his team has put forth. And try our best to get that budget passed. The way things are going now, you know, we have to go on that realistically. We're going to take a hit. We're going to lose money. But that's not up to us to decide here. Our decision is to make sure these students get the funding to properly educate them. We know times are going to be tough and things are going to change. It's, it's a moving wheel. It's, it's New England. It's like the weather. It's going to change. We know that for a fact. I mean, we don't even know when they're going to be allowed back into the schools. That could drag on, we're hearing that could possibly drag on to the fall because people don't stay home and follow the rules. We're at the peak of the pandemic. So basically, you know, our, our job is to set a budget. Waiting around to find numbers is not going to happen. It's changing every day. All we're doing is kicking the can down the road. Set a budget, bring it to the towns, let them work on it. They can have their say. Then if it gets rejected, it comes back to us. We work on it. But we can't keep letting folks be dangled on a string by not setting a budget. Jeff has to know what we're going to try to go for because he has to notify people if they're going to be laid off. So by pushing this down another week or two, does no good for these towns. It's just, you know, we're, we're going to hit the inevitable anyways. But we should be coming up with a budget that's supposed to be our charge to make sure that these kids are being educated. Whether the towns can pay for it or not, that's up to a town meeting, which is still to be seen sometime down the road. And like I said, if it gets rejected at a town meeting, it comes back to us. That's when we have to go back to Jeff and say, listen, you know, you got to make more time. Do you think we can, you know, do from that point? But keep putting it off. It's doing us no good. Jeff has to know. His administration has to know to move forward. We don't want to wait till like May to tell them, you know, halfway through May, that's unfair to people that are employed by this district. They have, they, they have the right to know and it's, you know, contractually, we got to be telling them at a certain point. You know, postponing because we don't know what's going to happen. You know, we can sit here till September doing this. The whole thing's going to come down to, we go to a one twelfth budget because we can't even get an agreement going by then. That fiscal year twenty twenty budget going into the school system, like Jeff said, you're going to have forty, fifty kids to a classroom, you know. And we don't even know what the mandate is. Like they're saying, the possibility have to be six feet apart. We can't just keep sitting around, set the budgets. Let it go to the towns. They can go back and say that's unrealistic, whatever. But, you know, if we don't give them something in stone, they don't have to work on it. And, you know, like we've been saying for weeks, we, we it's, we just have to get this done and get it going. We, we have major hurdles ahead of us. And that can be brought up after we find out what goes on with this budget. But I think we should be voting on a budget, setting the budget and giving it up to the towns like we're, we're supposed to. Waiting another few, four or five weeks, it's not, it's not going to do anything. It's not going to change anything but take more money out. So we can set it because we can always go down. We just can't go back up. People got to remember that. We can bring it down if we have to. We just can't go back up. So let's give them what they need and then work on it going forward. Because that can happen all the way up to the town meeting, as we've heard before. I said my piece. Thanks.
It's Don and then you, Mike. Go ahead, Don.
I believe the budget can be moved up. Is that correct? It can go down or it can go up? Chair Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to move to set the budget at fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That would includes the four additional teachers that Jeff requires.
Mr. Boyce, second.
Mr. Boyce, second. Discussion, Mr. Jones, you're next. Then go ahead, Mr. Jones. You have a second. We're going to go into discussion about whatever you wanted to say.
A question was, it was before that, but Jeff, can you explain why in layman's terms, and maybe John could also, the one twelfth budget, why does that include cuts? Why is that instantly a cut? Like we, I, I understand it's like, we keep saying it's forty-four teachers or whatever, but if it was a one twelfth budget, why instantly would it, would these cuts take place? Can you just explain that?
Sure, Mike. Because, because they're going to use fiscal twenty numbers. They're not going to, if it was, I, I could, if, if this committee approved fiscal twenty-one budget and the commissioner gave me a, a one twelfth of fiscal twenty-one, we wouldn't have to cut anybody. But they're going to use last year's numbers and right now, last year's numbers, we go went up. What percentage, John, or, or what was, I'm looking at my documents right now. We're, we're short, we'd be short two point something million dollars using fiscal twenty numbers.
Two point six.
Two point six million dollars.
So that's why if they give us a FY twenty budget July one, we have to keep to low salary. And we're short. So that would be the cut. That's why it's important to, to try to get, if, if the commissioner comes out on Friday and says it'd be a one twelfth of your FY twenty-one numbers, I, I wouldn't be as nervous about that. But a twelfth of twenty twenty, if we don't have a budget by September, I'm short forty-plus people.
Yes, thank you.
Mike, were you finished? I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, Chris Howard, then Don.
So I agree with what some of Dan said, specifically our, to make sure we're looking after as best we can the students of this district. I think the concern has been all along. And it goes back to kind of this change in the assessment methodology that we bounced around at nauseam. Is if, if we continue down the path of simply saying, this is it, there is no middle ground, take it or leave it. As an elected representative from Hanson, I can tell you what's going to happen. And, and I'm fairly certain we're going to end up at the exact one twelfth place that we're trying to avoid. So to sit here and say, well, let's just set a number instead of budget today, thinking that that's actually going to meaningfully determine and protect the kids of this district, I completely disagree. And I think that's the issue. I would even go so far at this point, based upon some of the discussions that we've had with some of the folks from Whitman, but I'd like to, I'd like to have on next week's agenda, depending on what the budget happens, vote happens today. I'd like for us to actually have an agenda item that rescinds the assessment methodology vote. And I'd like for us to look at, change that to give an opportunity to the town officials of Hanson to come up with a compromise. Because that has not happened up to this point. Clearly what's happening on the Whitman side is it's a take it or leave it. And if we do a take it or leave it, it is going to decimate the students of this district.
Don, then Fred. I saw you. Go ahead, Don.
I believe that setting this budget does meaningfully protect our students. Because what it does, it tells Commissioner Riley that we believe in what our students need. We know what they need. We know what our teachers need and that's what we're voting for. If we don't vote for anything, then we are at a detriment because we may go to one twelfth of FY twenty, but I still don't believe, because I know earlier in this meeting, it was said that you, that Commissioner Riley could set one twelfth of FY twenty or set an interim budget.
Interim budget.
I heard that interim budget, which could be any amount. And it's also in the legis, the, the law that says or other amount as deemed by the commissioner. So we know where we stand in relation to other districts and other towns and funding schools. I don't believe that the Commissioner of Education is going to come in and hurt these students or set every single town in the state of Massachusetts at one twelfth of last year. He knows that makes cuts. He knows that hurts every single school. So by voting for what we believe in our students need, that's what we're doing.
Mr. Boyce. And then Mr. Small and then Mr. Colling.
I didn't have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Small. I thought you were waving at me, Mr. Boyce.
Yeah, with all due respect, I don't see a path that we don't end up at a one-twentieth if we decimate our budget, which I can't vote for in good conscience to shave off our budget to what the administration says is absolutely the bare bones bottom required. And we've had years in the town of Whitman, you know, we took eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of one-time capital funds in order to fund a school budget a few years ago. We did it because it was the right thing to do and it still didn't meet the complete needs of the district. But it was what Whitman was able to reach up and do at that point in time. And we've taken money from free cash. Okay, and that was a year that I sat on that committee and we had members from your town, you know, saying, well, we need twelve percent. You know, that's what we need to set the assessment at. And I believe it was voted on at one point in time for that. And, you know, we have to provide an education to the students. And I firmly believe, based upon the new information from the superintendent, the changing times, you know, the fifty-three million and changes of budget is the bare bones of what these kids need. And to do anything else for us as a school committee to set it forward would not be a responsible act. Let's give the towns the number. Let's hope and pray that they will somehow figure something out. But if we're going to, you know, turn around and decimate our budget, that's wrong. And that's not fair to the kids. That's my piece.
Dan Colling, then Mike Jones again.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted, Mike, Chris, I, I'm not saying it's, it's, you know, this is it. And it can't change. I'm saying we have to give them something. And like we've been saying, we shouldn't be taking things away from the kids. We got to throw it at the towns and see what the towns say. We understand Hanson's most likely going to say, no way, because, you know, the way it changed and it puts a heavy burden on the town of Hanson. But as a committee, I'm an elected official too. As a committee, we have to put forth that to the towns to vote on whether they can do it or not, or at least give it to the fin cops and say, you know, yeah, it can be done or there's no way in hell it's going to be done. But we can't just keep taking away from this school system. We have to set, set the goal and, you know, give them what we think the children of the, the region need. Do I think both towns are going to pass it? Probably not, but that's not up to us. We have to tell them this is what's needed. Just like what Don was saying. If it comes down to the one twelfth, they're going to twenty twenty unless he thinks we have the gumption to say, no, this is what we want for our kids. And then he can set that. I mean, to, to look at it the way, just to say, well, they're not going to, or we're looking for a compromise. That's not our charge to look for compromises. That's up to the towns, not the school committee. As a town, as a taxpayer, you can say that, but as a school committee member, you're not supposed to take that and say, we're looking for a compromise. That won't happen this fiscal year. There's been no movement from Whitman, unfortunately for you guys. You know, I, I understand. I, believe me, I know what you're going through. You know, I, I do think maybe there should have been a phase in period, but nobody ever brought that up when it was voted on. So we're, we're at a point right now, we have to set a budget, give it to the towns and see what happens with the towns. Most likely they're going to reject it one way or the other, one town or both towns. But we have to set it for the best for the students of both towns, this region. And we have to, you know, we, we just got to go and get it in there and see what happens. Then if it's denied, it's, it's brought back to us again to discuss. At that point, then we really have to take on, you know, a big role of what's going to happen to the future of this school district. You know, we, we just can't be bringing it down any further than it already is. The kids are already getting a royal beating on that anyways. We have financial troubles on both towns. It's going to be a heavy hit on Hanson. I understand that. But we have to at least bring it to the towns. If it isn't, if it isn't like, this is it. You know, and that's not what I'm trying to say. I'm saying we have to give them something. If they, you know, don't swing at it and they just say, no, we're sending it back, just sending it back. I don't want it to sound like we're, we're dictating what's going to happen. We're just setting a budget which we believe the children of these towns need. And if the towns don't go for that. And if the towns don't go for that, that's really, you know, that comes back to us, then we work on it from there. I mean, but we also have to look at that possibility, that one-twelfth. If there is a possibility they're going to twenty twenty, but they might do something in between, I'll take that any day. We go to twenty, we go back to the budget year of twenty twenty, um, these kids get nothing anymore, they're not gonna get taught, it's, it's gonna be ridiculous, and even back in the days when I was in another regional school district, and you had double sets, because you had problems in there, just to really re, you know, be able to have classes because you couldn't fit everybody into one area. Um, we don't wanna look forward to that anymore, I mean, we, we gotta keep our kids to what they need. Um, if the town still wants to support that, shame on them then.
Okay, Mike, then Chris. Scriven, and then we're gonna move to the vote. I'm gonna send one of something different. Mike, Jones?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Ally Taylor needs to speak, Bob.
I'm sorry, Ally, uh, right after Chris Scriven.
Yep.
Go ahead, Chris.
So Dan, a couple of things I disagree with, um, first of all, I see myself as a, a member of the school committee, and and my charge is to do everything and I, I can in my power to advocate for and to ensure that our school district is supported um, as much as possibly, as, as we can be by the, the town, so, um, I'll, will continue to do everything in my power to see that that happens. Secondly, you mentioned that no one, uh, suggested a phased-in approach. Um, I specifically remember a phased-in approach being discussed um, initially, um, and then I sat in a regional, uh, agreement committee, um, when the selectmen of both towns were present, uh, uh, two selectmen from both towns were present. Um, the Jim Hickey from Hanson looked across the table at the Whitman selectman and said, you're basically asking me to trust you, correct? Because we were talking about going with statutory method, and that was the understanding. There really not, has not been a, a concerted effort um, from Whitman, I don't feel, uh, in, in good faith to this point, to, to come up with a compromise, and that's just the reality. Thank you, Bob.
Ally Taylor, I'm sorry, I didn't see Ally. Go ahead, Ally, unmute.
Sorry, it took me a minute. Rachel's not here to help me. Um, I can understand Hanson's predicament and their position, what, where, where they are, um, but to, basically, what, what I'm hearing is that you all don't wanna vote on a budget until you hear that there's a compromise, and while, to a certain degree, I can understand that, that's not our job. We, I don't care how they're gonna pay for it, how they're gonna divvy it up. Our job, as everybody has said, is to take care of the kids and vote a budget that we need. Not keep pushing this down the street until we hear whether there's gonna be a compromise, or, you know, whether Hanson is gonna have to pay what they're gonna have to pay, and so on and so forth. That, we shouldn't be holding up a, voting on a budget for that. You were voted to have the best entrance, interest of the students in mind, do what needs to be done for our students, our staff, in the school district. Second comes the town in Texas and so on and so forth. We need to vote a budget, we cannot keep kicking this down.
Okay, is there anyone else before, uh, we move to the vote? Fred, anything new? Go ahead.
Yes, uh, you know, looking at this whole situation, and that DESI is issuing guidelines next, uh, because quite frankly, if we voted right now, it doesn't pass with the seven, uh, member majority anyway. But probably better off to get as much information as we can in order to take a step forward. Uh, I think that might be prudent of our committee right now, to get that information. I mean, we have a motion in a second, and all in favor, you can move for, move to a vote.
I'm gonna move to the vote real soon.
You know, where we have, uh, some other things happening, and some more guidance. You know, perhaps, uh, that might be a situation, or it might be a method to utilize. As far as changing the methodology, we voted the method based upon what was requested by uh, one of the Hanson Board of Selectmen. That was, what came out of that was, it, it's in the minutes, Chris. It's in the minutes. Uh, that was my interpretation, they wanted a method. But even, even if the is changed, okay, it doesn't, uh, you know, quote unquote, change anything. You know, it's still, things get kicked one way or the other. You know, it's just a question of which town kicks it, so to speak, but if it does go to one-twelfth, it's statutory, no matter what.
And I think it's completely irresponsible of us if we don't vote a budget. Sorry, I spoke out of turn.
Okay, Rich, the, I have a motion of fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Now, in your packet, or whether you received it electronically, we do have a budget comparison, if you would like to hear what the two thousand and twenty budget is versus the two thousand and twenty-one budget, and how much percentage of change there is, or I will move right to the vote, would you like to hear that?
Move to the vote.
Just move to the vote.
Okay. I have, again, a motion of fifty-five million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I have a motion in a second. Mr. Boyce, yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Chris? Howard, Chris Howard.
Chris Howard, no.
Mike Jones?
No.
Robbie O'Brien absent, still, okay. Chris Scriven?
No.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Ally Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, no. Five-four. Would anyone like to make any other recommendations on a budget number? Um, I will read to you the comparisons before we go into any other version of a budget number. Two thousand and twenty benefits and insurance was eight million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. Two thousand and twenty-one is eight million, eight oh five, eight twenty-one. That's the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar change in the plus, which equates to four point three percent change. Debt and interest, in two thousand and twenty, it was eight hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars. In twenty-one, it was nine twenty-seven, five nineteen. It's a thirty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollar increase, equates to a four point one percent. Facilities, in two thousand and nine, in two thousand and twenty, it was one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. In twenty-one, it's budgeted at two million, four thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars. It's a fifty-four thousand dollar change, or two point percent. Legal, budgeted ninety thousand. Budgeted in two thousand and twenty-one, ninety thousand, it's a zero change, zero percent in, increase. Supplies and services, in two thousand and twenty, it was two million, eight hundred and seventy-one dot, thousand, fifty-eight dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, it's three million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's a two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollar increase, or nine percent, it equates to. Salaries, in two thousand and twenty, were twenty-eight million, nine six, nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, it's thirty million, three hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. A one million, three hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollar increase, equating to a four point seven percent change. Tuitions, in four, in two thousand and twenty, it was five million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, the budgeted number was five million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars. A one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollar increase, equating to three point six percent. Utilities, budgeted in two thousand and twenty, one million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand. Budgeted in twenty-one, one million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand. A fifty-two thousand dollar increase, equating to a three point eight percent. Transportation, two thousand and twenty was two million, five hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, it was two million, eight hundred and seventy-eight, eight sixty-one, equating to a three hundred and seventeen thousand dollar change, or a twelve point four percent increase. The total numbers, two thousand and twenty budget was fifty-two million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. In two thousand and twenty-one, budgeted fifty-five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, a five point zero percent increase, equating to two million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Jeff, thank you, whoever put it up there, I just see it came up, I wondered how the sheet changed. Fred? Then Mr. Boyce.
Quick question, uh, on the transportation line, the two million, five sixty-one, eight sixty-one, uh, a twelve point four percent increase, the majority of that, I'm taking a special ed?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, I just wanna clarify that, because I think the, uh, contractual budget went up either two and a half or three percent, if I'm not mistaken with your student, and the balance.
The, the first student increase was two and a half percent, or forty thousand dollars in total.
Okay. Great, thank you, John, I appreciate it. You are the man with the numbers.
Mr. Boyce, hand up.
Yeah, was, um, somebody asking for this specifically? Because I know we've been often asked for a lot of numbers, um,
Well.
I mean, it was nice to see, but was there someone, I mean, just name a name, who, some, someone said, you know, we need this, or whatever.
Dawn.
Dawn, it was Dawn?
Well, I had somebody ask me, and, uh, it was actually Justin Evans at the Board of Selectmen in Whitman, um, wanted to recognize the budget and in pieces that could be related to the town's budget. That being said, just our salary percent increases, and then other expenses that the district has that are like general government expenses on the municipality side, so the retirement, the health insurance, they have uh, maintenance, utilities, and so forth. So just to see those percent increases year to year.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Boyce? Dawn, I wasn't.
Yeah, well, it's good to know.
I know you wanted to answer him. Fred?
Uh, just for clarification under salaries, uh, that's not strictly salaries, that's also steps and lanes and other, uh, contractual incentives?
Correct, that's the total amount.
Yeah.
That's the total amount we would spend on employee compensation. It does include um, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in, in positions for, I think, I think they're all in technology and some additional costs related to, um, um, English as a second language learners. Um, but the rest is, is related to steps, lanes, cost of living.
Cost of living, uh, what about, uh, educational reimbursements, is that lumped into that line as well?
That is not lumped into that line item, it, it's strictly W, it's, it's strictly what would be reported as W two, income.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Hayes.
Yes, go ahead, Fred.
Uh, to set the, uh, the FY twenty-one budget at fifty-five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Mr. Boyce seconds.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Discussion.
Fred, could you say that number one more time for me, please?
Fifty-five million. Forty thousand.
Thousand, two thirty-eight.
Two thirty-seven.
Okay, I'm sorry, Fred, it is a dollar cheaper. Must have been that water you saved us on.
Yeah.
I thought you said.
Hey, I have my own.
Me too. Okay, so I have a motion in a second for fifty-five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Discussion. Dawn? That is also the number, before you go, Dawn, bless the four teachers, just so that people listening will know.
Right. Right, we just heard how important it will be in the fall when students return to have smaller class sizes, and this budget does not provide that. This budget keeps higher class sizes. Um, that's where I stand.
Yes, Fred.
Uh, and while I recognize that, and obviously by my vote a few moments ago, I agree with you, Dawn. Unfortunately, we don't have a past budget at that. I'm trying to simply do whatever we can for a past budget, and hope and pray somehow with some of the reimbursements that we get, that the superintendent's gonna be able to address those needs. Um, but we need to get a budget done.
Go ahead, Dawn.
I hear you, Mr. Small, but I can't vote for something that I would then have to explain to a commissioner or a representative that may come into DESI and say, why did you vote for this? Um, they may ask, tell us about your, why are you at an impasse? What is the challenge here? And I am going to say that I'm putting our students first and our teachers first, and I'm meeting our district goals of class sizes. Twenty students in a K to third grade class.
Not saying it's the right thing to do, but it might be the only thing we can do. And it may have to end up coming down low, depending upon where revenues come in. That's the scary part.
Anyone else before we move to the vote? I don't wanna miss anybody, I'm just scrabbling back and forth because I can't see everyone's hand. Mike, you good? Okay, so I have a motion in a second, the motion is fifty-five million, forty thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and it was seconded. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Dawn Myers?
No.
Dan Colley?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
No.
Mike Jones?
No.
Robbie O'Brien absent. Chris Scriven?
Nope.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Ally Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, no. Five, five no, four yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Does anyone have anything else to talk about with the budget or any other number they would like to propose, whether it be greater or, or less, or?
Mr. Hayes, I just have a question.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to. Ally?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
At the risk of sounding rude, is there any number that Hanson would vote for at this moment in time? Because I'm getting the impression that regardless of the number, it's always gonna be a no vote until you guys hear something different about a compromise.
Would, would anyone like to address that? From Hanson, that was directed to the Hanson members.
Yeah, I, I'll say yes, you're, you're right, Ally, there, there is no number right now, until Whitman makes the deal with our selectmen, we're not gonna vote yes.
Well, forgive me for being rude, but I think that it's extremely irresponsible.
That's your opinion?
We need to set a number.
It is.
We're gonna go to a one-twelfth budget unless you guys.
No, you're, you're gonna vote, you're gonna vote, you're gonna vote in a budget that Hanson's gonna refuse in years, in years down the road, it's gonna have negative effects on our district. We're looking at the bigger picture.
How are you looking at the bigger picture, Michael? Explain that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, uh, wait a minute, Mr. Boyce. I appreciate you jumping in, but Chris, go ahead, Chris Howard.
Again, I'll, I'll restate what I said earlier, I'd like to have the assessment methodology put on next week's agenda. And so then, Ally, the question comes right back to you, and the folks in Whitman. Right, so. So is it a question of the budget or is it the assessment methodology? Because I keep hearing it's, it has nothing to do with the assessment methodology. We need to pass a budget. So we'll, I think we should have that discussion next week.
Mr. Boyce. Mr. Boyce, then Ally, then Dawn.
I'm all set.
You sure, Steve?
Yeah.
Ally, Taylor?
I am just getting really frustrated with this committee. I can completely understand Hanson's position. But this is extremely irresponsible. And I am really losing my patience with this committee. We need to set a dang budget. The towns can't get anywhere unless we set a budget. Give them a number.
Dawn? Dawn?
I would ask Chair Hayes, Mr. Jones, Mr. Howard, Mr. O'Brien. You were all members on the committee during the regional agreement discussion two years ago. Started in 2017, three years ago now. You voted in favor of that regional agreement. The language in that is no different than what's presented before us right now in regards to statutory method. So I'm wondering what's different today that you didn't understand or you didn't know when you voted in favor of that regional agreement as a school committee?
Mr. Small?
I'll answer on behalf of the Hanson folks and being a Whitman member who this terminology does benefit. This was stuck in by Mars. I don't know that anybody had any discussion of that methodology when we were meeting, et cetera. You know, so I'll, if it wasn't crystal clear apparent to them, you know, I could see why.
I have one follow up.
Go ahead, Dawn. I was just scrolling back and forth. I didn't see her. Go ahead.
Thanks, Chair Hayes. Then I'm hearing that you're waiting, Hanson is waiting for a compromise from Whitman or a deal to be made. What's to say that when you are handed that deal and you are satisfied with that, that Whitman will be satisfied on the other side as well? I don't know what any deal is going to be and what the terms are going to be. So.
Okay.
I don't know that. You know, you're, we're all left anticipating, oh, we have to wait until Hanson is happy, until they're they're satisfied. But why, where is the compassion? Where is the understanding on the Whitman from Hanson to Whitman? Over the numbers that have been paid in the past when statutory wasn't realized? Although the district was telling DESI that we were using statutory. So help me understand what the deal is that you're waiting for so that maybe the six Whitman committee members can know that deal as well? And further discussion from there.
Chris? Scriven, I'm sorry.
Dawn, could you repeat? I didn't hear all of your first part of your comment there. Could you repeat that, please?
The first part of my comment.
Hanson's waiting for a deal, you said.
The regional agreement part where I discussed where this committee and Hanson members had been, had approved the regional agreement back in 2017 that went before the town meetings. This school committee and those members that are still on this committee, they saw that regional agreement that had statutory method in it. It, the committee approved it and it went to town meeting. So it's my confusion now that certain committee members are against that same language today that they did previously approve two years ago with that amended regional agreement. Is that the comment, Mr. Scriven?
I guess so. I think it's, I think it's important to reiterate the point that all, you know, we, if anyone was aware, it was a very small minority of people that knew about statutory. I know you can talk about the Finance Committee Handbook and I get it. I understand. But I'm trying to make the best decision for our school district based on what we know now and move forward. And I don't want to make a decision in a vacuum. I want to do what's in best interest of our school district in the long term. So that, you know, and yeah, I guess that's how I feel. Thank you.
Chris Howard?
Yes, so Dawn, I think Fred and Chris hit it on the head. I don't think anyone had a full understanding of what was happening the last time through. And I would point to the fact, and I would point to the fact is that everyone did. Then Whitman probably would have voted to approve the agreement after Hanson had voted to approve the agreement and then subsequently rescinded it. So to me, it's pretty clear no one had an understanding of what was going on with the changes in methodology. To answer your question in terms of what is it, what does a compromise look like? What I proposed to the Regional Agreement Committee in the first meeting was a 50-50 split this year. Take the statutory methodology, take the agreement methodology, sum the two together, sum the two together and divide by two.
Dan, and then Chris. Chris Scriven, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll reply to, when that vote was taken, most of us, I think, were all under the assumption that we were doing statutory. So when it's in that agreement saying we're going to be doing statutory, we're on the assumption that's the way we've always been doing it because that's what we're told. That was a miscreep to us. That's probably why it got by the committee. It went over to Hanson. They voted it on their town floor till it got brought up that it wasn't statutory they were using. We're using the methodology all along. That's when it became a storm. Number two, we have to start going into the past and only look to the future. What has happened has happened. There's nothing we can do to change that. Yes, Whitman may have been paid a lot more than they should have. But, you know, school committee, selectmen, FinCom, nobody notices to two years ago. So you can't go back and say Whitman shouldn't have gained a lot more money in the past. We're here now, the fiscal 2020 going forward. That's what we look at now. We can't keep going to the back saying Whitman paid lion's share of their deal. Number two, you know, I do, Chris Howard, maybe there should have been. A another oversight for us, some way of brought brought up to us saying two or five year plan, a three year plan, like you're like you said, 50-50, 70-30, then bang, you're done. Whatever it happens to do. Maybe that's what has to be done. But we have to move forward. People, we have to stop looking back at what happened. It's obviously, everybody was on the assumption we're doing statutory. So, you know, we're going to say, yeah, that's what we're doing until we're told, no, we've been doing methodology, not statutory. I think that's what most of the confusion was when it was passed and then brought to the town of Hanson. Town of Hanson voted for it in October. When we came to our May meeting, between October and May, that's when it was brought up that, no, we're doing methodology, not statutory. So and other questions on the agreement. So Whitman never passed it. If Whitman passed it, there'd be no talking right now. It would have been approved. Done deal. Gone for the state. Boom, done. But we didn't pass it. It allowed them to look into it. They backed out of it. Obviously, good reason. But we have to move forward, people. Compromise or not, it's not up to us. We're not going to do the compromise. That's up to the towns to work together. We're like the third town. We just have to come up with an agreement. Here's what we have to do. You know, maybe they, I mean, this is one of the reasons why I once said, don't trust them doing it. This is why the school committee should have done something a year ago. Because they can't get kicked down the road. We have to do it our own. We could have brought up the subject of, let's do compromise and bring it to the town. Bring it to the selectmen. Bring them on board to meet with. Nobody's done that. Maybe that's what they're looking for. Maybe that's what they have to do. But I mean, I heard on that last regional agreement, not the one today, the last meeting, certain people saying, well, no, that's it. It shouldn't be done that way because there are circumstances where you're facing it and you can't just drop a load of whatever to one town to the other and say, here, you know, because we paid more in the past. We didn't know we were paying more in the past. You know, we have to look at it differently maybe. But that's not up to us. That's up to those towns to get together and do that. And I'd say get done, get done quickly because it's just going to hurt the school district. And I think that's one of the reasons, I don't know what the Hanson folks think, whatever, Fred, or whatever. Definitely something I was under that we were doing statutory all along. So it's no brainer. It's like, all right, it's good now. And then when it was brought up to us, no, we're doing methodology. You know, it's, it's something that everybody, you know, going all the way back, selectmen, FinComs ourselves, nobody was on the right page until that was brought up probably 18 months ago to two years. All right, I'm done. Next.
Mr. Boyce, Mr. Small, then Mr. Scriven. And we've got to move this conversation. We're all saying the same thing. Mr. Boyce?
Nice to Mr. Jones. I didn't mean to lash out at him. And that's in all sincerity. I appreciate Mr. Howard saying a 50-50. You know, we did talk about compromises, but it was out of our hands. I think Dan was just alluding to that and a few others. That it has to be decided amongst the towns. I don't know where those conversations just don't go. I, you know, I don't. I agree with Ally that we just need to move on doing a budget. But Chris, thank you for adding that piece. Because, you know, my mind gets a little frustrated if, you know, our vice chair's now changed his mind from what he said a few months ago. But maybe this is part of the reason. And if you hear those pieces like, you know, maybe a 50-50. I always thought it would be some sort of segue. I know what we voted back in June of 2018. I agree with what everyone else is saying, what we voted. We were under the impression that we were doing the statutory, Dawn, and Dawn and others, obviously. But, you know, if I don't hear something like from a Chris Howard that is, there might have been mention of a 50-50 or something to get through this first year. But then again, it's, it's the other town leaders is kind of where that's at. Will they decide that? Will they agree to that? I was always told when I was on the FinCom, Dr. McKeown would come to me. He goes, you can't be colluding with the town of Hanson. Well, you, you kind of have to collude right now, and I don't mean that in a bad way, that term. But you kind of have to get hand in hand with each other because you're not, you know, yeah. They're deciding, one town's deciding one, one town's deciding for another. But you've got to have a little bit of communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Small, then Mr. Scriven.
Not to try and beat a dead horse, so I just want to try and say two quick things. One is I don't believe it's in our purview to be able to negotiate the deal. That has to come from the selectmen and the FinComs. Those are the folks that have to strike a deal. It's our purview to get a budget done. B, the one question I would have for everyone in Hanson and our Hanson committee members. Are you better off financially and within a structure paying the additional monies on statutory method? Do you still come out ahead better than if you had your own school district? And I think the answer is you come out still very much ahead by being a region, part of a region, even paying the statutory numbers. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Scriven?
This, my question actually, maybe John Tuffy could answer this. John, could you explain to me how the sped stabilization accounts work? Are they funded within the budget or like, how is that?
So it's been a while since I've looked at the details. But my recollection is that it's, it's a separate appropriation from town meeting to put money into the stabilization fund. Or the school committee can designate money would go into a stabilization fund and that has to be the first dollar that comes in on an assessment. And it's set aside, just like the town has a stabilization fund. And it's a restricted purpose. Can only be used for sped expenses. And there's a laundry list of what they, of what it covers. And I believe it is therapy's, transportation and out of district placements. Doesn't cover, for instance, class teachers, is my recollection. I'd have to look up the details. And it, and it sits there until it is, till it is tapped. Until the school committee votes to use it because of an unusual circumstance. It can't be used for any other purpose.
So is the, is the structure of the funding factored into the our budget? And how is it assessed to the town? You know what I mean? Is it, is there a specific? I think.
It becomes part of your budget in a budget line item. And it's assessed to the towns in the normal way, is my recollection.
Thank you.
I'll look up the details and confirm it. Get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Dawn, anything?
Just to follow up to that question Mr. Scriven had. Can you just elaborate a little more on where that information is coming from, Chris? Or how you're, you know, coming up with that question?
How I'm coming up with a question?
Yeah, I just haven't heard special ed stabilization fund mentioned before this entire year. So I'm wondering what the nature of that question is.
I think, well, in discussions with, you know, the different members of selectmen and whatnot, there has been talk about taking certain line items in the budget and negotiating compromise that way?
Certain districts, Dawn, have a sped stabilization account. Certain regional school districts, we do not have a sped stabilization account.
If.
Okay.
If I could add, it's only been around for about the last five, six years. It can, it can happen in a town that has its own school system or it can work for a regional school district as well. And if, I think we all remember a couple of years ago, we had some surprising sped expenses. And so the idea behind it was that you could ease out the, ease out the bumps, if you will. And so every year you could add money to that account. And so the year that, that you get unusual expenses, well, you've got to reserve to pay for it rather than having to try to figure out how you're going to come up with those, with those, with those costs.
Okay, I think part of my, maybe to answer the question, Chris heard that today, actually. Some of it came up today in the Regional Amendment Committee. And to set, set the record a little bit straight. Dawn, it hasn't always been, or Ally, it hasn't always been frustrating. You voted against it once. Dawn, you voted against it once because you wanted the four teachers in it. It was 7-3, 3-7. I voted with so-called against the Hanson members once. I'm voting against this because I think we're going to have more information by Friday. We have a scheduled meeting next week. I know we need a number, but I'm just explaining my position and explaining that this hasn't always been a six-four vote. This was a seven-three vote a couple of times with people from Whitman voting again with people from Hanson. You know, it's been back and forth. It's been good banter and there's been plenty of information. And there's certainly been people changing their vote, including myself. So I just thought that I want that to be. I have voted the other way. If we call it another way, there's no win in this. This isn't really a game. This is an informational thing of, we're trying to do the best that we can in this 10 of us. And $55 million, whether it's $55,320,000 or $55,40,237, they're very, very big numbers. It's a $2 million increase. And it's not an increase because if we want it to be, it's like your house. Things go up. And it's difficult and it's unsustainable, as I've heard in the past. And we have to get by this. There's no question. And as I said, I read to you earlier, it came right from Christine Lynch that on Friday, there's going to be some decisions made. And I voted against it because I believe Friday could make a big change. And the same thing that happened with the methodology that we're talking about. So is there anything new to be brought before this committee? Before, Michelle, don't we have a meeting for the 29th already?
I don't have anything posted yet. But you can have one, sure. That one's not on your calendar.
We meet weekly now.
Right. We what? Know that.
We, we meet weekly now instead of monthly. So.
Is it a standing invitation? Yeah.
It's a stand, you know, seven o'clock here. Next, next week, we're going to have chicken wings.
Hey, Bob, I just, I have a question to clarify. Is it two thirds or majority to pass the budget? It's two thirds, right?
Two thirds. There needs to be seven votes, Ally.
Right, so didn't we have a seven-three at one point?
Illegally.
Oh. I think it's at the full committee. Right?
It's two thirds of a full committee. It has to be seven out of 10. Seven affirmative votes regardless of the number that are present, right?
Yeah, but if you only had eight people and you have an affirmative, the motion would carry.
Correct.
Exactly. Okay, so we are going to have a meeting next Wednesday night. Does anyone have an issue with that?
No.
I've got places to be, you know.
Yeah, behind your computer. Fred, you must be freezing. You're still in the park and the sun's down.
I'm in the back, yeah.
Chair Hayes, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Someone want to second that?
Second.
Who seconded it?
Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Boyce.
Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Robbie O'Brien, absent. Chris?
Yes.
Scriven, I'm sorry. Fred Small?
No, I mean, yes.
Ellie Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. unanimous vote, 9-0. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
I have no idea how to hang.